Good morning Birmingham. This is a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is May 21st, 2024. This morning, our invocation will be led by Father Philip Paxton, pastor of Holy Family Catholic Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor J.T. Moore. If you're willing and able, please stand. Good morning Birmingham. This is a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is May 21st, 2024. This morning, our invocation will be led by Father Philip Paxton, pastor of Holy Family Catholic Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor J.T. Moore. If you're willing and able, please stand.
So loving God, I ask that you continue to bless the city council and their staffs. I ask that you inspire them. Inspire them at a time in an age of division to be agents of cooperation. Inspire them at a time when many people are on the brink of despair to be agents of hope. Inspire them in a world where there is too much violence to be agents of justice which brings peace. And so Lord, I ask that you continue to bless them, continue to lead them to serve the common good, and so do their part in helping make Birmingham the place you created it to be. And I ask all this in the name of the one I believe to be Savior and Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Madam Clerk. Could we please have a roll call?
Good morning, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning, Councilmember Smithman. Good morning, Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning, Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, and Council President O'Quinn.
Present, thank you. Council, before us, we have the minutes of the February 6th and February 13th, 2024 meetings. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written.
So moved.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for the February 20th, 2024 through May 14th, 2024 meetings. Don't see anyone present from the mayor's office. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, so we have not received any. However, please note that you do have one appointment on today's agenda to be made on, it's item number 47. And so we do have, if you'd like to name now, I can tell you the name that's being proposed.
That's, it's on the agenda, so we'll do that at that time. Okay. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, at this time, can we read through the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page two with items one, two, three, and four. On page three, we have items five, six, and seven. We go over to page five, we have item eight. On page seven, we have item nine. On page 11, we have items 10, 11, and 12. Page 12, we have items 13, 14, and 15. On page 13, we have items 16, 17, 18, and 19. On page 14, we have items 20, 21, 22. On page 15, we have items 23, 24, 25, and 26. On page 16, we have items 27 and 30. On page 17, we have item number 31. Please note that there are some corrections to item 31. The second line from the bottom, it should be $250,000, not $23,000. And we're going to add the wording, it should read Shades Creek Trail Expansion. We're going to go over to page 18, we have items 34, 35, and 36. Oh, I'm sorry. Please note the revision you received by email yesterday, and you should also have a copy on your desk. There was an addition of wording on page two of the resolution. When you look at it on your, it was highlighted in yellow yesterday, but the one today, it should be underlined. So there was just some additional wording added to item 35. On page 19, items 37, 38, 39. Page 20, items 40 and 41. Page 21, items 42, 43, 44, and 45. Page 22, items 46 and 48. On page 23, items 49, 50, 51, and 52. And please note that there was also, I'm sorry, typo on item 51. It should be approving the expense, the itemized expense accounts of city employees. And that completes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counsel Williams?
Can you remove item 41?
Forty-one?
No, forty.
Four-zero, okay. That's page 20, item number 40. Any others? All right. Do, so we have several public hearing items, items one through three and seven through 27. Do any members of the public wish to remove one of the public hearing items marked as consent from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I believe we're ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk.
The motion, I'm sorry.
Motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Right, now we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion is approved. So if your item was on the agenda and was marked as consent, it's been approved. Thank you, and you're welcome to say if you would like. All right, Madam Clerk, please read our first item.
The first item is item number one. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's item number... Let me get over to it. It is on page 16. Item number 28. An ordinance amending Title IV Municipal Services, Chapter Five Streets and Sidewalks, Section 4-5-36, installation of utilities, et cetera, prior to paving of streets, and Section 4-5-134, same when payment excused of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to provide methods of notice to abutting property owners and utilities regarding paving or repaving streets, alleys, or any portion of the vehicular way of any street or alley regarding restrictions on openings, cuts, or excavations for five years after completion of the improvements. This item is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent.
Motion for UC.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Oh, she's out. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander?
I'm sorry.
Council President, Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right. Now we need a motion for adoption.
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right, it's been properly motioned and seconded. And is there any discussion on this item? Counsel Williams?
Do you mind if we have the administration just do a five-sentence summary of what it is?
Mayor Woodson?
Mr. President, to Counselor Hunter's question, maybe less than five sentences. Utilities companies need to be held accountable for jacking up our streets.
Enough said, I'm for it.
Mr. President?
Counselor Abbott?
I have a question about that. Now, I noticed that the utility companies were included, but plumbing companies are the ones that we have a problem with in our neighborhood where they just show up and dig up the street and leave a big mess and then leave. And apparently, we don't have any way of getting them. So how are we going to know who's digging up our streets?
Mr. President, to Counsel Valerie Abbott's question, they can nub if they want to as well. We'll get with the legal department and actually permitting, I think, can give us more direction on all those who need a permit to engage. Are they required to do a permit, what you just described?
I imagine they are, but they rarely ever do. They just do as they please in our city, and we don't, we don't know.
Well, no, look, I want to be totally straight with you. Let's treat them like we treat the utility companies, and if we need to come bring another ordinance or permanent operation to hold them equally accountable, that they have to do notice, et cetera, et cetera, we'll do that as well.
Well, when I have turned them in, I have been told-
They're supposed to.
-that if the police don't see them doing it, like if the trench is already covered up, that we can't do anything, because who are we going to call? I mean, that hotline to permitting doesn't go anywhere. So if we see it and we want to turn it into somebody and we want somebody to take action...
Cedric Doc Sparks at BirminghamAL.gov.
All right. Thank you.
Just a note, Mayor Woodson, that it's not included in this amendment, and I understand that this is time-sensitive, yet ahead of street paving that is also on this agenda. I do think that we need to revisit the fee schedule for when these street excavations are done within that five-year period after paving. I think the maximum amount, the first year after paving is performed is $1,500. You know, I'm not sure if, if in those instances, the utility company would be performing the paving or if, if it's one of our crews, but if it's, if it's us, I dare say that we can deploy a crew and pay for materials and equipment with $1,500. So I think it's, I'm just making the point that I think that we ought to revisit that fee schedule at some point in the future to...
Mr. President, to your point and your suggestion, I think if you'll allow, I'll get with chief operations and we'll get with PEP related to the debt ordinance as well as the fee schedule.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? None?
One other thing.
Counselor Abbott?
When people get caught not getting a permit, not doing things the right way, the fine for that is pretty pitiful. And I think we need to jack those up because they know what they're doing. They come out there at midnight and dig everything up, and they come on the weekends and dig it up. They know, they're trying to avoid being caught. So if they get caught, just doubling the fee seems insignificant.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Noted, thank you. Counsel Williams, did you have a...
Does the council need to fix that, or are you going to take that on?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
To your colleague's point, I say the council take it on, and the administration fully backs whatever higher punishment you deem is necessary. But I agree that some people aren't unfortunately deterred by a financial penalty. And so whatever else you all decide to crank out, we fully support you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a few weeks in our jail will cure them.
Say again, counsel? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you correctly.
I said a few weeks in our jail would cure them.
Yes, okay. So ultimately, it's up to the council to, you know, it's the legislative branch to make any changes to any ordinances, so, you know, we'll certainly add that to our legislative priorities. All right, Counsel Williams, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just wanted to thank the administration on working on this because, and the council, because this, I mean, the 10 of us have made collectively a really significant amount of investment in street resurfacing.
Sixty million.
Huh? Significant into, into the tune of $60 million when, you know, there were several decades where we did not have a consistent resurfacing plan for the city of Birmingham. And I think that all of our citizens and guests see that when they drive through the city to some extent. And so if we're going to dump $60 million into street resurfacing, there's nothing more infuriating to me, especially when I'm driving through my district, something's been recently resurfaced. You feel like you fought, you know, World War III trying to get the street resurfaced, and then a utility has cut and there's a huge poorly patched area. So, you know, this, I'm very glad that we're able to pass this today.
Counsel Smithman?
And I've also heard complaints about them not using the same type of material we use. That's another problem as well, because when they repave it, not only does it seem like it's bumpier, it's not, it degrades a lot sooner as well. So I don't know if that's something we have to put in the ordinance, but hopefully when we hold them accountable, we need that too, because like Counsel Williams said, we do all this work to repave it, they literally almost messed it up like a month later, and then kind of defeats the purpose of us paving that street. So I'm hoping to see that as well, but I'm excited about this.
All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That motion passes. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item will be item 29, also on page 16. An ordinance amending the General Code of the City of Birmingham, Title 11, Chapter 6, Section 15, currently reserved to prohibit laudery, laudering, remaining, or wandering about in a public place for the purpose of participating as an organizer or spectator in any exhibition, driving, or street racing activity on the public highways of the city of Birmingham. This item is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first.
Motion for UC.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Now we need a motion on the item.
Motion on the item.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
I think it's important to point out, I mean, you know, this came through public safety, and I think it's important for the public to see the efforts of this council and this administration in trying to curb exhibition driving and street racing and whatever else we want to call the reckless and obnoxious behavior that has plagued the city since COVID. So I think that it's important to point out that not only has there been an enforcement effort with Operation Night Rider? Okay. And, and obviously, results coming from that when you look at the number of arrests and vehicle seizures, but also that we're codifying things into existence to further curb what has really been extremely obnoxious for the citizens of Birmingham for the past couple of years.
Counsel Abbott?
I just had one question, and that was, does this also pertain to the promoters, the people who come to do videotaping and photography of the acts?
Good morning. Julie Bernard, I served in the Office Assistant, Office of City Attorney as an assistant city attorney. The, the ordinance applies to organizers or spectators, so, and basically applies to anybody who's, you know, helping organize the event, you know, get it together or otherwise aid in a bet, say like blocking roads so traffic can't get through, all of those kinds of activities, as well as somebody who is knowingly there attending the event.
Well, that'll get them. Thank you.
Attorney Bernard, can you, so the public is aware, what's the penalty for this violation?
It's a municipal ordinance violation, so it would be up to $500 and up to 180 days in jail.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Clark?
I just want to say thank you for this, because I do feel like while the racers themselves are a moving target, a lot of the aiders are more stationary and, you know, discouraging the spectator, I think, will go a long way in combating this activity, because it's for the spectacle of it all, so hats off, thanks. I hope this gets us somewhere. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is on page 17, item 32. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority, under which the city wants it obtain its title to parking deck number three on the former Caraway Hospital site from Northside Redevelopment LLC, will convey title to the deck to the BJCC for $1, and the BJCC will redevelop and renovate the deck to provide parking for the new Amphitheater and the Star Development. This is also an item of permanent operation, so we will need unanimous consent to take it up.
So moved, second.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Now we need a motion on the item.
Motion on the item, second.
Counsel Williams and Moore?
Okay, now the item is before you.
Okay. Any discussion of this item? All right, seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved.
Please note my abstention, thank you.
Again, number, item number 32 is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is item 33, also on page 17. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute and enter local cooperative agreement for a term of not more than eight months and ending on December 31st, 2024, between the Transportation Security Administration and the City of Birmingham for its police department for participation by the Birmingham Police Department in the TSA National Explosives Detective K-9 Team Program. The city will provide TSA-certified K-9 handlers to participate in the program, and TSA will provide training in K-9s for the city's use, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of the agreement. This agreement replaces any existing agreement with TSA covering the same subject matter. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first.
So moved, second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
It's Williams and seconded by Counsel Moore.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and please note that this item was also recommended by the Public Safety Committee.
Now we need a...
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Counsel Number Smithman?
Aye.
Counsel Number Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Number Woods?
Aye.
President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion, second.
All right.
Williams and Abbott.
Okay, now this item is before you.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Abbott?
I just wanted to ask why it's only for eight months? Is this like a program that actually ends?
Sarge, introduce yourself for me.
Yes, sir. To Counsel President, Counsel President of the Council, Mayor and staff. Sergeant Greg Porter with the Birmingham Police Department. I'm currently the K-9 supervisor. And this agreement is only eight months, because on June, I'm sorry, in January of the next year, they will present a new agreement that were, that will extend longer than the eight months. This prior agreement, the, this agreement prior to the last agreement, the reimbursement stipend has been removed. So that's what this agreement is for, that reimbursement stipend for the last agreement ended May second of this year. So they're just continuing to follow the agreement on to the end of this year without the reimbursement stipend.
Can you tell me why it's being removed?
That's, um...
TSA.
TSA. I think from Public Safety Committee, Ms. Abbott, I think that TSA has chosen to remove it, which is unfortunate, but they do still require us to have those dogs, if I believe that's correct, so.
Okay, well, that's the answer. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions?
No, I just, I appreciate Sergeant Porter and his team and what they do at the airport. I know that we have a very expansive list of TSA K-9s, and so I know he's got his hands full, and I've enjoyed getting to know him through public safety, and I think they do an awesome job keeping our travelers safe.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item, we will go to item number forty, which is on page twenty. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a project funding agreement between the city of Birmingham and the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama, Fordham University of Alabama at Birmingham, under which UAB will construct and operate the Altech Stieslinger Genomic Medicine and Data Sciences Building, which will accelerate research in genomic medicine, computational biology, and support facilities located at UAB's hub of basic and translational research enterprise, and enable UAB to accommodate an estimated eighty new and existing researchers, who will generate approximately forty million dollars in new awarded funding and employ an estimated six hundred fifty additional support staff as they advance medical science. The city will pay UAB pursuant to Amendment Number Seven Seven Two and amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars in support of the project. Need a motion on the item.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, so I believe that was Protem Alexander and Counselor Smithman. Counsel Clark, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. So we did take this up in Economic Development Committee, but I was trying to remember, like, what is the funding source here? Didn't we, didn't we set aside ARPA funds for this, like, way back before we went to the ribbon-cutting or something?
That was suggested as the original source, but it eventually came out of the general fund, out of economic incentives.
Okay, so we're taking it out of the general fund, economic incentives?
Yes, ma'am.
But when we were taking it out of ARPA, didn't it have another zero on it, maybe? No, it just seemed like it was big.
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of unless counselors gave support for projects around UAB.
Didn't, didn't we allocate ARPA?
Well, Counsel Clark?
That got us invited, right?
I'll, I'll, keep in mind that we also approved an incentive for Southern Research for three million dollars for their new...
Okay, okay. I was just trying to remember the history of this.
Yes, ma'am, it's, the, Mr. President is right, Southern Research is different from UAB genomics.
Okay.
Did we do that with ARPA?
Didn't we do the Southern Research with ARPA?
Yes.
Okay, so this is what they requested for this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Mayor Liffen, I just want to say kudos for negotiating, you know, probably one of the highest return on investment economic incentives that I can think of.
All credit, all the credit goes to UAB. I think you all have heard me say it as a relation, Mr. President and counsel, as a relation to our economic identity and economic future, what biotechnology, healthcare, as well as personalized medicine. In this case, the UAB genomics, what they're doing is a game changer, not just for UAB and our community, but I think it sets us apart. It puts us on a course related to a pretty aggressive, positive future in healthcare, in healthcare provision.
Right. I think just on the occupational tax alone, on all of those positions, you know, this will quickly be, you know, paid, paid for, so. All right, Madam Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Please note my abstention.
All right. That item passes. Next item?
The next item is item number forty-seven. It's on page twenty-two. A resolution appointing one member to the Industrial Development Board of the city of Birmingham to fill the unexpired term of Kirk Atkinson for a term expiring April tenth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Need a motion and the name.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
All right.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Counsel Williams?
Yeah, the Economic Development Tourism Committee has selected Meredith Calhoun, who comes at the recommendation of the IDB Board. She's filling the unexpired seat of Kirk Atkinson for a term of four years expiring April the tenth, two thousand and twenty-eight, and her resume is in most of your hands, it looks like.
Any questions? All right, Madam Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is item number fifty-three. It is located on page twenty-three. A resolution setting a public show calls hearing on June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider the matter of revoking the business licenses issued to CRU Accru Birmingham LLC doing business as Crew Lounge, twenty-three hundred First Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two zero three, and to consider rescinding Resolution Number eighteen ninety-seven dash twenty-one, granting approval for a lounge retail looker Class One license approved on November second, two thousand and twenty-one, and furthermore, to direct the delivery of notice of such hearing to the licensee.
That's William and Abbott. Any discussion on this item? All right, we're ready for the vote.
As a counsel. I may address the counsel, if you don't mind. My name is Julian Hendricks.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
This is not a public hearing?
I understand.
Are you a member of the city staff?
No, no.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, so we're not allowing comment at this time?
Well, it's just a request.
Sir, please be seated.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Clark?
No, I'm not calling him back up, but I, I just want to say that I think we're really making some progress with the issue through the ordinance that the mayor proposed with the loitering, and I'm just concerned about...
Point of order, we're talking about a public hearing and setting a date.
Okay, so I can only talk about setting a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I wish we weren't setting a public hearing for this particular item, but I guess that we are.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll reserve my comments for next time.
Vote accordingly. Madam Clark?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Can I abstain?
All right. That item passes. Next item, please.
All right. The next item is item number fifty-four. It's on page twenty-four.
Need a motion?
A resolution setting a hearing on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider the adoption of the Technical Code of the city of Birmingham, two thousand and twenty-four, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one International Building Plumbing Fuel Gas Mechanical Fire Existing Building Energy Conservation and Residential Codes, the two thousand and twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code, and the NEC two thousand and twenty electrical code, and NFPA one oh one, two thousand and twenty-one Life Safety Code, with local amendments. Need a motion on the item.
Move the item.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on this item? All right. Counsel Abbott?
It says that we're adopting the international codes with local changes, and when I went to the end of the voluminous amount of pages we had, I couldn't find our local changes. Did anybody else see them? Like, I'd like to know what we're changing.
Certainly. Public safety, we had, we got a red line.
I thought we received a red line. I read a red line yesterday.
Was this a, was this...
Okay, well, maybe I just missed it. I'll, I'll talk to you about where you saw your red line later. Thank you.
This was recommended by Public Safety?
Yes.
Okay.
I was actually there for that one.
Yeah, yeah. I couldn't remember since I voted against it if we had a vote.
All right. Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. That item is approved. This time we'll have our district announcements. Counsel Clark, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start with reading the announcements for District Nine. The East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M via Zoom. You can use the meeting ID eight seven three seven two five six zero three three seven, and the passcode three nine five seven nine one. Also, please note that the Evergreen Neighborhood is now meeting at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center, and the next meeting will be tonight, that's May twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, at five P M at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Also, the Smithville Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at May, that's May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, via conference call at six P M today, and you may call the office of District Nine to get the details for that meeting. The next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four at one P M. You may submit agenda items via email by Wednesday, March twenty, I'm sorry, I guess that's May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, no later than noon. And you can, if you have questions about any of these meetings or need details or questions answered, you can contact Beatrice Collins at beatrice dot collins at birminghamal dot gov, or Greg Stanley at gregory dot stanley at birminghamal dot gov. That concludes the District Nine announcements. Now moving to District Six. Please note that we have a community meeting, the Five Points West Community Meeting. We'll meet on Thursday at six P M in the community room of the West Precinct. And we're saying our goodbyes a little sadly to Birmingham Southern. They're gonna have their last graduation on the hilltop Friday, May twenty-fourth. It's the final commencement in the Build Battle Coliseum at nine A M. And on this bittersweet occasion, I'd like to wish the graduates much success in their future endeavors. And as if the students of Birmingham Southern haven't displayed the utmost resilience already, the baseball team refuses to lose. The Panthers have advanced to the superregional round of the NCAA Division III Baseball Championship. They'll take the field this Thursday at noon to continue their quest to win it all. Let's make sure they feel our, our support all the way in Ohio. Also, in District Eight, Fama Health is hosting Community Health and Wellness Experience on June first. That's gonna happen at the Central Park Rec Center from twelve thirty to three thirty. There will be interactive learning sessions, giveaways, tastings, and more. Please also note that the Birmingham Fire and Rescue is offering free hands-only CPR training at eleven of their fire stations. These classes are available right now, and they only take ten or fifteen minutes of your time to learn. Please visit Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service Department on Facebook to get more information about the free CPR classes that are being offered. Also note that Habitat for Humanity is hosting a service day in the Rising West Princeton neighborhood, close to Rickwood Field. It's gonna be two side-by-side lots, that's on June the eighth, from nine A M to three P M. All are welcome to volunteer, but you must register and sign the waivers. So you can go to h f h g b dot volunteer matrix dot com and use the access code neighbor to sign up. And finally, it just came to my attention that CityWalk has an art market every third Saturday, starting in May going through December, and it's three P M to eight P M in the Purple Block behind the School of Fine Arts. So that's the CityWalk Art Artist Market every third Saturday in the afternoon from three to eight. And for more information, you can go to citywalkbeham dot com. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Clark. It's been brought to my attention that we need, I, I'm going to make a motion that we reconsider items fifty-three and fifty-four to change the dates. On item fifty-three, we've been informed that the attorney for Accru Birmingham is not available on June fourth due to a conflict, and also on item fifty-four, a few of us will be attending the National League of Cities Summer Leadership Meeting, and will be out the week of June eleventh. So therefore, I'm, I'm making a motion that we reconsider those two items. So therefore, I'm, I'm making a motion that we reconsider those two items to change the dates to June eighteenth.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
All right, those changes are approved. All right.
So now we need to motion to uh, change the date.
Okay, so uh, make a motion that we actually change the dates to June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four for both items fifty-three and fifty-four. Counselor Clark. Okay, we'll uh, vote on those separately, please.
Okay. For item fifty-three, uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, did we get a second for item fifty-three? Okay, you did. Okay, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
And then one extension.
Okay, so the amended item fifty-three is approved. Item fifty-four.
Okay, and for item fifty-four, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
That amend- amended item is approved. Okay, back to announcements. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this week is a joyous week. Uh, we have high school graduations going on. Um, so um, four schools will have their graduations on May twenty-third. Carver High School's graduation will be ten A M to eleven A M. Huffman will be from one P M to two P M. Uh, Jackson Nolan will be from four P M to five P M, and Parker will have theirs from seven P M to eight P M. Uh, Ramsey, Weenona, and Woodlawn's graduations will be Friday, May twenty-fourth. Uh, Ramsey starts at ten, Weenona starts at one, uh, and Woodlawn's will be at four. Uh, all other graduations will be held at the Birmingham Crossplex. Um, for friends and family who can't attend, each ceremony will also be streamed via Vimeo. Um, also wanted to, you know, give a quick update uh, and let folks know that um, if anybody was uh, participating or um, utilizing Don Hawkins Rec Center, that the Birmingham Park and Rec has been notified that there are some uh, challenges that need to be addressed, and so they are currently diligently working on addressing those uh, issues. Uh, and then, let me see. Also, we have uh, two Neighborhood Association Meetings taking place this week. We have Harriman Park that will take place this fourth Thursday at six thirty P M, uh, as well as Norwood that will take place on this Wednesday uh, at six P M. And so, uh, the Norwood Meeting will take place at the Norwood Community Center, and the Harriman Park Meeting will take place at the Harriman Park Rec Center. Um, and lastly, you know, before I close out, um, last week was a very, very traumatic week uh, for um, one of my neighborhoods in my district, uh, Woodlawn. Uh, we had a gentleman, uh, Mr. Michael Philip Coleman, who, you know, was beloved by the community, uh, was always seen uh, in the neighborhood and was tragically uh, gunned down uh, last week. Um, and was an innocent bystander. I'm pretty sure, you know, a lot of people heard about, you know, the individual who was in a wheelchair. That was, that was Mr. Mr. Michael Coleman. Um, and it's, it's very challenging. Um, it's very challenging. Um, because as a counselor, but also as a resident of the neighborhood in which this happened, right? Um, number one, you never want to see these types of things happen. But number two, it hits home when it's somebody that you're used to seeing all the time. Um, somebody who doesn't bother anybody, you know, always has a smiling face, and it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating, uh, because the area in which it happened is an area that has consistently been a problem, consistently been a problem. Um, it's the same area where another uh, resident has had their house shot into. Uh, it's the same area where um, we had a lot of uh, activity, drug activity that caused for the McDonald's to shut down, and it's not something new. Um, East Plaza Apartments, East Plaza Apartments. And I want to say, you know, thank you to the mayor and his team for, you know, um, sending out the city attorney staff, uh, as well as, you know, the police department at East Precinct, uh, to, to help us to go and do a walkthrough. But it's, it's not enough. Something needs to happen. Something needs to happen. And I don't know if that's us, you know, uh, putting more pressure on the property owner, putting more eyes on that location, but something needs to happen to ensure the safety of the people who live there, uh, and who are in that area. Um, because people are getting tired of saying the same thing over and over again. Um, I think, you know, the, the statement is, you know, when you see something, say something. And I know for a fact that since I've been on this council, I've said something. And at this point, it's, it's time for something to happen. It's time for something to be done, and so, um, again, I, I thank the mayor, I thank, you know, Attorney King, um, and Captain Quikleviney, but we want to see something done. We want to see something done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the next Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting was scheduled for tomorrow, but it is now canceled. Um, we have two openings, we still have two openings on the zoning board of adjustment. One is for a construction contractor, and one is for a supernumerary who just comes and fills in when we don't have a quorum. Um, please submit resumes to valerie dot abbott at birminghamal dot gov. Uh, Neighborhood Association Meetings, we have one, and it is to- tonight at six thirty P M at Fi- the Five Point South Neighborhood will be meeting at Highlands United Methodist Church in Five Point South. Um, if you have concerns or issues in the city of Birmingham, please call three one one, or better than that, put the My Beham three one one app on your phone, and then you can send photographs. That's all for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Smedman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, before I start my announcements, um, it's been brought to my attention that the National League of Cities is asking uh, local governments to recognize May twenty twenty-four as National Cities, uh, Towns and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and N L C's historic centennial anniversary. So, um, I would like to move for UC for this, to move for a resolution acknowledging this.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And thank you, Mr. President, and so, um, since we moved for this resolution, I know Paulette will get something official, then we will be in N L C's national press release on May twenty-second because of this, so, thank you. Um, we don't have any neighborhood meetings this week. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will not be on Monday, May twenty-seventh, due to Memorial Day holiday, but we will have a special call, Budget and Finance, till the following day on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, at eleven thirty A M in Conference Rooms D and E. And then at Railroad Park, if you don't have anything to do this weekend, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at seven thirty P M, there will be Symphony in the Park with Alabama Symphony. It's free. Um, you can bring a picnic, um, so food only, but uh, please come out if you can. Um, it's packed every year, so something to enjoy, family-friendly fun events. So, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Press team, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin with the D seven announcements, I would want to take this opportunity, um, over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the tenth year celebration and commemoration of Oxmoor Valley Elementary School, and at that time, we were very delighted to learn of the results of the A C A P reading proficiency scores. So I just want to thank, I know they will be present, Dr. Sullivan will be with us this afternoon for our committee of the whole. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Birmingham City Schools, the staff, the parents, the students that worked so hard, and all of the community partners that helped to improve those scores. Um, they went to eighty-one percent in reading. You may think that's not a hundred percent, but that was a significant gain. And um, the children that did not meet proficiency, the, to my understanding, the school board is offering summer tutoring and um, opportunity for them. They will have an opportunity to take the exam again before school starts. So let's all uh, rally together and help those students so that they can also attain that proficiency. So kudos to Birmingham City Schools. At this time, the announcements for District Seven, there are no Neighborhood Association Meetings in District Seven this week. We do have several bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled. Today is scheduled for West Goldwire, Tarpley City, Industrial Center, and Garden Highlands. Tomorrow, that pickup is scheduled for Grisella Heights and East Brownsville. On Thursday, scheduled for Roosevelt City, so come on neighbors, let's get our trash out there and get it picked up. And then on Friday, it's scheduled for Germania Park South. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few quick announcements. Uh, the Sutton Valley Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six thirty P M. That meeting will take place at East Pinson Valley Rec Center. Also want to invite everybody out, the Magic City Showcase is back, be hosted on June eighth. Uh, that is a um, local high school football combine. This is year number four, and so it's continued to grow, very excited about how the opportunity presents. If you want to register, if you are a high school athlete and you want to register, uh, it's a free event. You can register at W W W dot magiccityshowcase dot com. Uh, W W W dot magiccityshowcase dot com. The event is on June eighth, and the deadline to register is May thirtieth. And so I want to encourage everyone to get out and do that. Also want to shout out to all the graduates, including a graduate in my own house. And so I um, I was one of the people probably for the last, on the, because we didn't have kindergarten graduations, so I'd always be like, it's not a real graduation. Why are y'all, you know, so, but when she got her capping gown, I was like, okay, I see what's going on. So I was excited about it. Uh, but she loves to learn, uh, loves school, tremendous work ethic, and uh, she actually was awarded uh, kindergarten battle victorious, so she is
Wow.
the first in the family, so. Uh, we're gonna keep supporting, uh, supporting her, but uh, it's, it's interesting because you learn stuff from the kids, and so apparently there's been a new ocean added since I was in school, and, you know, I got into a debate with a six-year-old, there's not five oceans? And she, I had to look it up, and so, um, so the, the, the learning process never stops, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Woods. Uh, this week in District Five, the Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M at the Downtown Central Library. The Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will meet next Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, at six thirty P M at Girls Incorporated. The next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Meeting will be held, will be held Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four at two P M. If you have any submissions, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly dot phillips at birminghamal dot gov. The Eastlake Farmers Market, sponsored by Peer, Peer Inc., takes place every Saturday from eight A M to noon at Eastlake United Methodist Church until the second Saturday of October. The Children's Theater Summer Park Series has started and will feature a theatrical production of The Wind in, in the Willows. This free series will take place at parks across the city to include Avondale, Ensley Park, Willowood Park, Memorial Park, and Don Hawkins Park until June twenty-second. For more information, please visit W W W B C T one two three dot org, and note that uh, they will be performing at Ensley Park, both Saturday and Sunday. Again, check out W W W B C T one two three dot org for more information. And finally, applicants, applications are open for the Jones Valley Teaching Farm High School Paid Internship Program for Birmingham City School students. This opportunity is open to rising eleventh and twelfth graders and is for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, strongly encourage um, student, juniors and seniors to apply for that program. It's, it's um, not just about farming. There's um, all, there's a lot of variety there to include um, conversations on social justice and, and other issues as well. For more information, please visit W W W J B T F dot org or call two oh five, four, five, three, two, six, seven, eight. All right, at this time, we'll have our public speakers. Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is Jacqueline Hardy.
As you approach the lectern, please, please remember to state your name and address, and note that you're, you'll have three minutes, and the time will be displayed on the monitors behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to share my issues. My name is Jacqueline Hardy. I'm at twenty thirty-two, twenty-eighth Street, Ensley, Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, one, eight. What I hold in my hand is a letter from Governor K. Ivey. I responded, I sent her a letter to let her know what I was going through here in Birmingham, Alabama, which is being bullied, badgered. My home has been broken into while I was in the custody of the police. They held me in handcuffs, said they were taking me to be evaluated because I fired a pistol. Why did you take me to the county? Either or. Once I got back home, my televisions, laptops, printers, all my paperwork involving this was gone. When I reported it to the police, they were very nonchalant about it. Nothing had been done, still haven't. I spoke with um, the county, the representative of Ensley, and I've shared with her, prior to that, my aunt passed away. Um, I ran out the house, you know, once she passed away in panic, and the first thing I saw was an S U V police car cruising by, and once I stopped him so that I could have her pronounced dead and removed from the home, he said, I'm off duty, and he left. Moving forward, we got her removed from the home. She was eighty-two years old, and she passed there, giving her up six months ago. She lived past the six months and passed away. Unfortunately, I left my home just for peace of mind, because I live alone, and when I got back, my whole two thousand and fourteen Dodge Charger was gone. No help from the police, no one is trying to move forward. So that is why I fired a pistol in the air, because behind my home is where I found my two thousand and fourteen Dodge Charger. They brought it back stripped. I never pa- pa- shot a gun in my life. I didn't even know how to load that gun. But I have no help. No one is helping me. I would never shoot anyone. I shot in the air. They held me for twenty-four hours and wanted me out of my home. When I got back, like I said, nothing is in my home. The back of my house is constantly filled with people in the McMahon Park. I have pictures where they just, just throw stuff out there, hang out. But in, in regards to moving forward, to really why I'm here, is I had an issue going on with my life where I stopped getting in trouble. I started taking care of my elderly. I had a couple for seven years. No trouble, nothing on my record, driving license, zero. Everything excellent. Then all of a sudden, boom, let the police come again. They wrote me a ticket, said I was doing ninety and a something, I don't even know, but I had, I knew that wasn't true. So I presented this to the judge, which let him know, really brief, Hagan versus Levine, four fifteen, five, three, three. There is no discretion to ignore lack of jurisdiction. I didn't make this up. When I get into the courtroom, I'm held hostage. They put me in contempt. Throw me on the sale with vomit on the wall.
Ms. Hardy, just want to make you aware that your time is expired. Please wrap your comments up.
Absolutely. I'm only wanting you all to know that if I have no help, because Governor Ivey said to reach out, and that if I didn't get any help, then she would get involved. I need some help. I've told you things that people have, if they had went through this by themselves, would be crazy. And I'm still standing strong. All I need is, I need someone to know that these judges and these police need to be held accountable, and I'm fighting right now for that.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Next speaker, please.
Eric Fancher.
All right. Next speaker?
Sherman Sterling.
My name is Sherman Sterling. I'm located at 2413 Reed Road, Northeast. I'm honored to be here this morning, thanking the mayor for and the council for approving the Caribbean restaurant as one of the many needed cultural dynasties in the city. And we appealing to that, thanking the council for making the decision and may bring more Caribbean menus. My goal is to complement that with the 28th Annual Bob Marley Day Celebration, which is June 29th and 30th. It has been recognized in Washington that June is a Caribbean month of celebration. And we appealing to the council to recognize that, to help governize more people for the culture celebration of the Bob Marley event. I'm asking for each council's support and help with the list of items I submitted to each one of y'all. You all can look at that. No man is an island, and I'm making sure I come before the family, asking you all to help me to make this event a success. It's been 28 years rough, but Mama Parker, Maxine Parker funded the event, $25,000 in '07. That's the last money I got from the city. But the Lord has brought me to you all today, making sure, you know, I'm a citizen of the city. Reggae music is my life, that's what I do as an international performer. And we honored to have the Whalers as the official headliner coming in June 30th as a tribute to Family Man Barry. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And the mayor, same way, thank him for heavy load out here, nothing easy. Thank you. One love, we love you.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. All right. I think we're at the end.
Yeah, economic development and tourism has been canceled due to a lack of submissions, and I have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed?